Welcome everyone to tonight's school board meeting. The chair, Mr. Shagnon, will be in a little late. So, public participation? You just have to go up to the mic and state your name, please.
Good evening. I'm Blanche Tanner, President, Farmington, taxpayer. I just want to take a moment to thank Superintendent Vaughn because she has been extremely helpful to me in answering questions that I had prior to and after the deliberative session. So, I feel like I have a lot more information than I had before. I would never presume to tell anyone what to do, but I'm not a part of social media. I don't have internet or any of that stuff, emails, none of that stuff. So, I don't hear all the stuff that's around. But I would really recommend, and I hope I'm not out of line, that anyone who has questions about the school, to please email the superintendent on the school board. Don't go on hearsay because a lot of what you may hear is not true. And so, I would just really recommend that, and I hope that everyone will take that to their heart. Thank you.
Thank you. I have approval of minutes for February 1st, 2018, public session.
May I motion to approve?
Motion by Linda. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Angie. Any changes?
I just, I had one. The budget committee part, I think it was the group wanted a joint. I think that should be mentioned that we were unanimous in that.
It was the one individual that said we should do it?
Right.
Okay.
All right. Hearing nothing else, I'll call for a vote. All those with favor?
Aye.
Is unanimous?
I'm going to abstain. Is that what they have?
Okay, I apologize. Three, one abstention. Two, one, non-public.
Motion to approve?
Motion by Linda. Do you have a second?
Uh, no.
Second by Angie. Any changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
One abstain, are you abstaining? Three with one abstention. Minutes at February 3rd, public session. Motion by Angie. I'll second. Same here, I think that same message should be the board felt.
Where, so, the board wanted to bring?
Yes.
Or it already says that?
Uh, no. It was the paramount. Sorry, I wrote notes.
Okay. Oh, okay. All right. So, first paragraph on the second page.
Yes.
Okay.
I wrote notes off my computer so I didn't have to print it twice. Anything else? All right, all those in favor? Are you abstaining?
No.
All right. Unanimous? All right, minutes of February 5th, 2018.
Public.
Public, yes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second by Stan. I think where we tabled the financials, it needs to be mentioned that it was because they weren't available early enough in our packet to review them.
Oh, okay. It was because Mrs. Verwo wasn't present.
Okay.
You had them, but she wasn't present.
Because Mrs. Verwo, all right. Sorry. I apologize. I didn't remember the reason for that one. All right, sealed minutes, do you have those for us to review, or?
I do. Oh, we didn't run this one.
Do you want to vote on these?
Oh, sorry.
Unless somebody else has any revisions?
I don't.
Hold on, come to five.
All those in favor?
Aye. There's the seal. I only printed one copy.
Do we want to review them and come back into public?
Yeah.
Later.
Yeah, so we'll table those.
Let's slow down everybody here. Motion to table.
Motion to table.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
So, that was non-public one and two?
One and two. Minutes of February 5th, non-public session three.
Motion to approve?
Motion by Linda. Second by Stan. Any changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Minutes of non-public session four.
So moved.
Motion by Angie. I'll second. Any changes? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a student presentation? Or is it?
Are you doing a student presentation?
Yes. Wait, we want to put that in.
Um, I think that should go now.
All right, all right, Brian.
All right. First off, is this a good distance?
Yeah.
Okay. Fair to ask. First semester here at Farmington High School has ended a few weeks ago. As I said, everyone can tell, it's a bit of a lively building tonight. Unified basketball, boys and girls basketball, and spirit, they're all currently active. Tigers to Tigers is finally reforming as a group in hopes of becoming more active again in the community. The group is going to be meeting this Wednesday with the purpose of establishing a regular schedule of meetings. The national honor side met earlier this month to discuss past and future events between the 13 attendees and the pledges they gathered. $1,301 have successfully been raised for hurricane relief in Puerto Rico via the Red Cross and the Rockathon fundraiser last month. Still to come, the annual JT La Macho Basketball Tournament that Farmington holds is to be held on March 20th, 21st, and 22nd. From some information for the public, if I may, the games are to start each night at 6:00 PM at Farmington High School in the gym, of course. Anyone wishing to assemble a team may still do so. They are prompted to contact Mrs. Louise Leahy at LLeahy@SAU61.org. The deadline for signups is March 9th. The cost for signups is $10 per player. Teams consist of 68 players. As for attending as an audience member, adults may attend each night for $5 per night or purchase a $12 three-night pass. Students may attend for $3 per night or purchase a $7 three-night pass. For any senior citizens over age 60 or children under age 13, assuming, of course, they're supervised, they're all going to receive free admission. On another note, no further responses have been gathered from that first survey distributed. A second survey was sent out this month to determine student opinion, as I mentioned, last December, on real-time, the dress code and discipline. I did have to suspend that survey. That ended up being mistakenly edited when students were trying to respond to a bit of an honest mistake. I forgot to send out instructions on that. It's currently being remade based off a paper example. I couldn't recover that digitally and will hopefully be redistributed by the end of the week. I actually have. First off, may I ask something? It looks like, Ms., you're the one filling in for the secretary?
Uh, no. I have.
Just passing it down, just down that way to Ms. Cardinal. And you also wanted to copy this to Mr. Frida.
Thank you.
I need my digital.
Oh, I can email that to you. Sorry, it's been a little while. I'll make sure that's emailed to you. Thank you very much. And I have a copy with some responses I was handed up, the student survey I mean to distribute if anyone would like to see it and make some suggestions for any other opinions they want to hear.
Mm-hmm.
I only have one copy, so you can all look at it if you like.
So, do you have any questions?
And you would like it back?
Yes. Actually, I'm fine either way. I'm going to be, I have a few more copies at home that I'm going to be sending out, or that I'm going to be using to create the online one.
So, do you have any questions for Brian?
I just was wondering on an update on the fundraising efforts for the senior trip. How's that going?
Oh, actually, they've been doing fairly well. Some of the payments are in. When we actually had a meeting sometime after the school board meeting, we, I want to say it was in December, if not January, that parents and students for the senior trip hip all assembled in this library, he's a month, a hundred or two ago. And Mrs. Chef explained what was going on, and the members of the public seemed actually very greatly vested in helping out as far as fundraising goes. I remember one individual, and Mrs. Chef asked if there are any questions, I rose his hand and asked him, "Okay, so obviously, some students here are not going to be able to pay for that. Are we going to be able to come together and make sure that these students are going to be able to, who still attend the class trip?" Because the public had the same concerns that some of you had as to payment and fundraisers. I'm glad to say, I remember the first payment sheet for the first payment that students were prompted to make. By that point in time, many members of the senior class were told that we had enough that we could take $100 off some of the charge for some of the students who would need it if they couldn't afford the senior trip otherwise. Parents, when they were signing the form, to say they understood that there was, they needed to make this payment, had the option to check off that they liked to donate the $100 so that they were going to be discounted from the trip to a student, another student and their family who would need it. So, we've been making some good progress.
Excellent. All right. Mr. Frida?
Okay. I was looking like, is there anything I'm missing?
No, I'm shaking my head yes.
Shaking your head yes, that's a new one. I was going to ask something to Mr. Frida. After I have the student survey sent, would you like me to email you a copy of that as well to put in, or you just want the report?
Just the report would be fine.
Okay.
Did you have a question?
I did, I have two questions. How many people in senior class?
I want to say approximately 60. We had a little over 60, and then I remember, a few months into the quarter, two, we were told it was like 50-something in the late 50s. And then some people did graduate early. I don't know the official total, it's around the 60.
So, how many people are going on the class trip?
Twenty-six.
Oh, it's not really a class trip, just a 26-people trip.
Yeah.
Anybody have anything else? Thank you, Brian. All right, we are moving on to financials.
If you would like to, we could start with the revenue report first. Let's see.
Which report would you like to review first?
She said revenues first.
Thank you.
And there is a financials folder in your pocket to try to keep from having to scroll and scroll and scroll to find, scrolling of four instead of 15.
We're all set?
Yeah.
Oh, you said revenues?
Yeah, I can't pull it up, though.
I'm.
It's confusing to me, and maybe this may be something very obvious to you. The bottom section for state revenues and federal revenues, very last page, these are the child nutrition line items.
Yes.
When I look at two years ago and last year, and I see the totals, it appears that revised budget for current year is doubling and tripling. Either double or triple, those numbers from the previous two years.
What line are you on?
Specifically, the totals.
Page five.
Yeah, page five.
Page five, okay.
The totals for the 3,000 section and the 4,000 section.
Okay, so.
You expecting that?
What I've done is, under the revised budget, is that those are the anticipated, as best as we can, an anticipated breakdown of what we received for, from Cafe Services, what we would get from sales. That sales would be lines 74 through 77. And then 78 through 80, they don't have really any control over that. State nutrition monies that come actually from a previous year. And then lines 80 through 88 are what, or lines 80 through 86 are what Cafe Services is estimating. So, what we do is, we plug those numbers in.
But why are they so much higher the previous two years?
Let's see, so what I'm reporting.
We're not charging more for meals. And our enrollment definitely isn't higher.
No, it's not. So, because I have to come up with an estimated amount of the budget, last year, we did not do well. We did not do well with the previous contractor in terms of sales. So, in order to have what Cafe Services had projected in terms of revenue, if the revenues don't come in, they're not going to be having expenses that will exceed the revenues. They've already told us by $99,218, they're going to be able to meet that mark. We're still examining last year's revenues and trying to reconcile with the previous company and looking for those details.
So, is that just a placeholder? Is that what you're saying?
It is a placeholder, but still, it's something that we would be trying to see, how close do we come as far as tracking that?
But it's something where it's a revenue that's projected, but in the event that that revenue doesn't come in, there will not be an expenditure that exceeds it, so it will be a wash.
It is supposed to be a wash.
With the exception of that $9,000 figure that's in our contract.
Does that answer your question, Angie?
It does. I mean, it still doesn't make any sense. How can we possibly project that high in sales compared to what actually happened the previous two years? I can see the one year being off with the previous contractor that we had, but two years in a row, our numbers were significantly lower than the numbers projected for this year.
If you look at our year-to-date, our year-to-date is already higher than what it was the entire year at the end of January.
Right.
Our year-to-date at the end of January this year is higher than our full year was last year.
Okay. I see that for the 4,000 group.
For the 4,000 group, yes.
I don't see that for the 3,000 group.
Right.
And I also.
Yep. And I was looking at the 4,000 group when I said it.
Yeah. If we could just take another look, make just a double check that we're not maybe double counting something.
Okay. Oh, that's fine.
It's much better to catch something like that earlier than wait until the end of the school year to figure that out.
Yep.
But if truly is that much better in food sales, that would be fantastic.
I'll report back at the March meeting with where we are doing.
Means our kids are really eating that much more food offered to them.
Maybe the offerings is that much better. Yep, go ahead, Ms.
So, let me just ask a clarifying. The 1,000 group is actual money that the kids spend, and the 3,000 group is money that we get from the state?
From the state, right.
And then the 4,000 is money that we get from the federal government for the food?
Right, right.
I see. So, do we have to request that money?
Yes, we do.
Based on the sale?
The director, the director goes and requests those funds, right?
Based on the sale?
Based upon the sales, based upon the reports, and then sends those through to us.
So, this is, so these are, this is up there. I don't know what that means.
Linda, did you have anything?
So, I will report back to you with, at least provide you a progress report. Lines.
So, we're six months in. Current period is 7,000. Yeah? If we were doing that much every single month, yeah? Okay.
All right. Anybody have any other questions on the revenues?
I just, can I just point out one thing?
Yeah.
I did include it in my notes, but on lines 87 and 88, I mean, with the director and his management support at Cafe Services, we're also able to claim from the federal program, USDA claim for snacks for the FAMMY program. Not even, even though it's not a significant amount, but it's just the idea that we are able to do this, and they put that mechanism in place to be able to collect the funds.
Every little bit helps.
Great, and we can feed children, we love that.
But I applaud them for taking the initiative to put it in place. Let's see, can we continue with expenditure report?
Sure.
If you'd like.
Everybody's good with revenues?
Yeah.
Okay.
You have several notes.
The year-to-date.
This would be.
Or the special revenue.
Is that the general?
No, I was going to talk about the general fund. If that was okay? If everybody's ready to.
Okay.
Okay. So, I do have one negative variance on line 10, which the individual's now eligible for health insurance buyback. Sometimes that does happen throughout the year where something changes in a qualifying event. Let's see, line 17, we do have a correction in process for a negative variance about cost sharing. Overall, we do have some savings in our, in our health insurance, probably in excess of $70,000, simply because people have qualifying events, things do change throughout the year. But I think that those funds could be ideally safely used for reallocating for one of our next topics, concerning the life safety grant application. Line 127, I'm intentionally leaving this negative variance for tracking substitutes just so that we can have a comparison. Obviously, it is covered by other areas of the budget. Also, line 140 is for unexpected insurance buyback, which is covered elsewhere under lines 138 and 139. And then regarding the SRO officer under line 264, we do have a new SRO officer who's a senior, senior officer with the town. So, we expect to have those numbers sort of like re-crunched so that we have an idea of how much more we will have to contribute.
What's that?
What happened to the fellow we had?
He's no longer with the Farmington PD. He's moved to a different position.
So, am I to understand that the SRO officer's salary is based off of experience? It's not a set price that is utilized for SRO? It's, the officer is hired by the PD, once assigned as SRO. It's with my, I sit down with the chief and we talk about who and why and where, from those who are interested in being SRO, and that, but it's under the contract for the police department and under their bargaining agreement according to experience and years on the force, and that's it.
And then, and then they're trained as an SRO.
Yes, and then they, they receive additional training as well. So, thank you.
Were there any specific questions or areas that I can address for you?
No.
I don't think so. Stan?
The last report would be the federal funds report, and I really only have one area just to, just to talk about, and that would be, pull this up here. Basically, everything is tracking well. We do have some carryover funds and under an entitlement grant, let's see, it was line 268. You'll notice that there is a negative variance of $13,134, but that is going to be covered through carryover funds. We did anticipate that, but we just needed to be able to put it into its proper cost center.
So, we haven't over-expended the grant?
Right.
Okay, thank you. It's always a good thing to hear.
Does anybody have any questions on the special revenue funds? All right. You good, Linda?
I'm good.
All right. Principal reports. Did you have something else first?
No, that's fine. I shifted gears far too quickly.
Okay. Oh, it doesn't matter to us.
I just didn't know if the high school was going to, because they hit.
I was going to talk about the January report, too. Last month, we had, we were able to have all of our PE classes do snowshoeing, and they were able to get out into the snow, and then the snow melted, but it came back again. But the kids were able to get out into the snow, they were able to try out the new snowshoes. I do want to thank three teachers who went out, well, four teachers. Mrs. Cook had, Mrs. Smith, Mr. Pringle, and Mrs. O'Connell, who went out and helped kind of blaze the trail for the kids so it wouldn't be as hard for them to go through the snow. They took an afternoon and went out and did that. So, I wanted to thank them for helping us out with that. In the January report, I also put in some scores from our benchmark assessments from STAR, and we had shown some great improvement. So, if you check those, the, every grade level went up in their scores, especially kindergarten and first grade. So, it was nice to see some improvement and some progress with the RTI that we've been For this month, we, our kids in art and music in the third grade are working with Mrs. Smith and Mrs. Bondi on a canjo project where they're kind of like guitars, but they're made out of cans, and they're decorating them, and they're learning to play them and learning about other instruments like them. So, I'm sure that we will have pictures and possibly music for you to hear towards the end of their project. But they're having a great time kind of using the knowledge they've learned to design a pattern for the canjo and then learning about how to play and how, you know, other instruments that are similar to the, to the canjo. Besides that, we've had, this month has somewhat been quiet. Knock on wood somewhere. We are planning, starting to plan for our kindergarten screening after February vacation and collecting names and getting ready for that. We're going through paperwork right now. And we sent out progress reports, and the teachers have been working on standards and ensuring that we're covering standards with the curriculum materials that we use. And that's it.
Anybody have any questions?
Just on the STAR exam results that you showed us in the report, the improvement from September to December.
Yep.
Which is a startling improvement in such a brief amount of time.
Yep.
How do those December scores compare to last year's, last school year?
I would have to look. I have not looked at that. I would have to look at that. I can, though, and I can pass that on to you.
I bet I could probably look them up. They probably.
I don't know if I put them in last year's report.
It'll be, yeah.
You'll have.
Well, like 14 months lag, isn't there?
Well, STAR isn't uploaded to the state. STAR is our, our assessment.
Smarter Balance is what we see online.
Yes.
I can try to see if we have it.
Yeah, just overall.
It's up, yeah, here and there, or.
I will say, from what I remember from last year, this, this outstrips what happened last year. It's a much bigger jump.
Continuous improvement.
We've made progress, but it wasn't as eye-catching.
As marked.
As, as this one was. I mean, like, in, just for example, in kindergarten, kids that were at or above benchmark went from 19% to 59%. So, just some huge numbers like that across the board for kindergarten and first grade. And then second and third have made progress as well. But, yeah, just some really great numbers and some really hard work by our teachers.
Yes, excellent. Thank you.
Anybody else have any? All right, thank you very much.
I feel like I'm taking up the whole room. So, I've been here in a while. So, I have some December things and some January things and February things. So, we have also been looking at our data. We are meeting with our teams once a month in data meetings, every grade level meets. And Melissa has been, or Ms. Faith has been coming to those meetings and talking a little bit lately about some ways that we can start getting ready for smarter balance and setting schedules and what teachers can do with their kids to get them familiar with some tools. We also benchmarked our students and saw some really good improvement across the board. We decided to use STAR a little less often this year, and I think we're seeing the benefits of that. So, we're getting, kids aren't getting kind of over-tested feeling by completing the same 40-minute chunk of assessment every six weeks. So, we bumped it off to three times this year, and then teachers have been creating some grade level benchmark assessments and progress monitoring within their grade level. And they bring that to those meetings, too. We've also been continuing our understanding by design and curriculum work with our consultant, Andrea Reed. She has, she'll be doing six after-school activities when we're done with them. So, we're on number three this Thursday, and we've had between 10 and 15 staff members come. The last two times, we've had 15 staff members come. So, after school, they're working for two hours with her to tweak some units and to think about different ways of implementing their standards for their grade levels and their content areas. We've also been continuing our work with Marcelo Brown from Pluma State with PBAS, and we're doing a couple soft rollouts with some targeted behaviors that we've talked about as a school. So, if your kids come home and talk about staying on the right as a whole school, and they're doing some. they're doing some various other things, like sixth grade focused on bringing a pencil to class last week. So that was the thing they focused on for the first two minutes. We've been using advisory time to roll that out to students. So it's just a five-minute teaching script that people, not people, but teachers wrote. On our last workshop day, they created teaching scripts for everyone to use whole school. The UA team did that. And then each team created those for their individual teams. So they're all, the kids are all hearing the same message over and over again. All the way back in December, we had our junior honor society go and decorate a bunch of the windows downtown. That was really nice to see that and see their faces downtown during the afternoon. We have an art club that Mr. Bonello has started for grades six through eight. We're starting some morning tutoring in grades four through eight. It's just taking a little hiatus for a couple minutes as we transition over to another grant to pay the rest of that out. But we'll get going again. And Ms. Ladue's advisory, they raised a little over two thousand dollars. Sorry, that was their goal. They've almost reached the two thousand dollars, but we're culminating, for pennies for patients. We're culminating that with the pie in the face part of the fundraiser on Wednesday. So I'm going to dress a little differently than I did last year. I really don't want whipped cream in my hair. But it'll be fun. The kids get a big kick out of it. And so we're, it's in the afternoon of one of our winter carnival events this week. Yearbook raised a little over, almost two thousand dollars for their, using a Little Caesar's fundraiser to offset the cost of yearbooks for all students in our school that want to participate in that and purchase one. Ms. Coco and Ms. Bondi are doing the after-school music ensembles through FAMI, and we've had quite a bit of turnout for that, so that's nice to see. And teachers are working really hard, and kids are working really hard at Henry Olsen. So we've made some huge growth. It's awesome.
Anybody have any questions?
Oh, yeah. Sorry. You mentioned one field trip in your report coming up. Are any others scheduled yet, or are the teams still working on what they are?
Sixth grade had to reschedule theirs because actually the museums are going to go to, canceled their date. I think something else, much more lucrative for them, probably came in, which is a bummer, but they're working on something different. And eighth grade has something in the works, and I believe fifth grade does, too.
Okay, so fourth, fifth, sixth, eighth.
Seventh, thirty. Did you, already did yours, right?
Seventh, go on a field trip.
You already did your field trip this year?
No, we're talking about it.
Okay.
Okay. So each grade just has one.
We've been here almost three years, the years start to roll into each other. It's kind of amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Moore?
And we'll do kind of principal's report and kind of roll right into the presentation from the high school as well, so.
Okay.
I brought along a few people tonight to help with part of this presentation, and I'm meeting with some competition upstairs and in the gym. So we have a couple students that were here, and because it's spirit week, they're being pulled to do some banners and everything else. So I'm not quite sure if they're coming back or if they left some messages here.
Yes.
Okay, they left some messages here, so they'll share that. But I just want to start with a little bit of talking about trying to move Farmington High School forward. There you go, my toys play, live here. And sometimes we're met with some challenges, sometimes we're met with some things in terms of what it has been and where do we want to go. And we have a fairly good idea of where we want to go, and that's going upward. We're certainly embracing the board's challenge to make Farmington High School part of the top ten within ten years, if not sooner. Actually, we have less than ten years now. And we're making a very good B-line to make that happen. We know that things have to change, and we change mostly in response to what our students want. So tonight, we're coming with two requests. They can be related, they don't have to be related, we can approve one and not the other. Our ideal would be that both are approved. But it's a program of studies that actually meets the needs of our students. It addresses the needs that they want to look at in terms of being able to study. It prepares them to be what we're calling college and career-ready. There's several components that direct us into that venue. And the other one is an approval of a daily schedule. That's a change. It still maintains some of the features that are currently available in our daily schedule right now. Question is, why change the program of studies? There's a few reasons. Paramount probably is, part of it is the law. We're trying to match the law for ED 306 and several RRAs. ED 306 has been around for many, many years. They also do a cycle at the DOE for a school review every ten years. We're up for that review next year. Just so that you're very clear, this is aside from NIAS. This is not part of that process. This is all about state approval and that we meet for our minimum standards of what we're supposed to be offering within our whole program for our high school program. Some of those things have been talked about since about 2014 and being a competency-based school and that students have the opportunity to demonstrate mastery of graduation competencies. We're just starting that process. That should have been in place in '15 and then by '16. So we're a little behind the ball on that. But I will say that my staff is making a very good faith effort to move that forward as quickly as we can. Part of that started with the draft that's out there of our profile of a Farmington graduate, and currently is at the other two schools for feedback from those teachers. Part of that process with ED 306 was a realignment of some course expectations. It defines that English is a four-year program and that all students need to be involved with an English course or English and integrated subject matter every year that they're here at the high school. Likewise, it's the same with math. Students need to have math or a math-intensive program every year that they are here at the high school. We know we're a little behind on that. Actually, when I came, people kind of looked at me like I had three heads. I said, "You haven't been doing that," because that has been the requirement since, I think, 2015. And so we're moving ahead forward, and we've put some ideas into a new program of studies that would address that for students so that we can have some more math-intensive courses that's really about application. And if you stop and think about it, that's really what college and career readiness is about, is applications, so opportunities for application. We've also redefined what has been listed in our program of studies as computer, which is kind of an old throwback when students used to have a keyboarding class or software establishment class. We're really looking at places where students can integrate their skills and work with their skills as part of an application, again, college career-ready. Some of those courses are TV broadcasting, digital photography. We're introducing a couple new programs for spreadsheet or CAD, so they would also have opportunities to be ICT compliant then. Another part is the whole movement towards STEM was further defined in ED 306. STEM programs talk about different areas of expertise that students should have an opportunity, at least learn about, experience, and we're looking at one of the new courses to address those components more adequately than we do currently. We're also looking at a program change to meet the needs of our students. One size doesn't fit all. We know that. We have a program of studies that's somewhat thorough, but it's not very broad. So some students are not being able to have their needs met because they're either ahead of the pack or the whole group. I guess it's a group of tigers, that's an ambush. So they're either ahead of the group of students there in terms of their academic studies or because of other challenges they may face, they're not quite to the point where most students would be. So they just need some remediation courses or some skill-building opportunities. A program of studies change addresses some of that with some new courses that we put into, address reading needs, some math needs, even courses to plan for their career success. And so we're offering some ideas around those opportunities, present opportunities for students in that manner. We also know that we need some remediation. That was part of a reading course that we're looking at, not just a reading course that would be offered to special ed identified students, but also some other reluctant readers that with a little extra time on task, a little more instruction, could actually be reading closer to their grade level or where they should be reading so that they could be successful. The other part of a program of studies that we are suggesting, and I have to give very good kudos to our two guidance counselors, they've done yeoman's work in developing pathways that would define careers for students. It's a guide tool. It's a tool that's pathways, outlines certain pathways, so that students with assistants could possibly choose a career pathway that they may be interested in. And that career pathway will further define courses that are offered here at Farmington High School that would lead them to those goals. It's not a closed door, so once you go through one pathway, you can never go to another one. It's not designed that way. But it's a tool that actually decides and shows, there's a lot of crossovers, especially in those core academic courses that actually will fit many courses. To that end, we're trying to start off a kickoff in March. We have a big day coming in March that's going to be college and career-ready. The whole school will be testing that day for PSAT nine, the SAT test, and ASVAB test, again, as one of those steps towards college and career-ready. As you look at a program of studies, and I've given you the new courses that are being suggested, we've kind of structured them loosely around four areas. Job-ready skills, and I think in your pre-packet, I showed you some of the courses that would be highlighted by job-ready skills, CAD courses, Excel, Strategies for Career Success, and others. We've also looked at global connections and participation. That was a mindfulness to our school district mission statement, that we're preparing students to be global-ready, to be participants in that society, and to have some connections there. We're looking at some citizenship courses, some opportunities for ILEARN where they can connect with other students, not just in New Hampshire, but globally. We're looking at Cold War studies to have an idea of where we've come, so we know where we're going in terms of the society, and some other areas with courses within that area. Technology and innovation is a new component that we're trying to really add for the application. It fits with music composition. We're suggesting a course that would actually be a composition course using digital components of software and computers to do that and keyboards. We're looking at Technology Solution Group, which was our in-house tech team, that students would help teachers and students pinpoint problems, show them how to use different softwares, how to become very global in terms of our use of Google and the Google apps that go along with that, how to actually apply some of those software components, and that we maybe move beyond Google Classroom and Quizlet and Kahoots to other applications of animation and iMovies and expressions of what they want to communicate. We're also looking at environmental awareness, that we're suggesting two advanced biology classes that would tie in very nicely with New Hampshire and give us access to some of the facilities that are supported by area of local schools, colleges, and the fishing game, well, like personnel and continue our studies there. In keeping with a draft, I think, in one of those principal reports that I didn't get to make because we had snow weather-related issues, we are presenting a draft of a graduate profile. And that profile talks about students being able to learn deeply, create authentically, and reflect continuously on their route to becoming lifelong learners. That is a throwback from the movie that many of us watched, The Students and Teachers, that it's a focus on learning and how do you learn? And our goal is to make students lifelong learners and to teach them while they're here how to learn. And it's more than just being able to answer the worksheets, but move beyond that and to be able to follow through on those three major issues. How does that all happen, and how is that tied to the next slide? My next slide talks about a change of our daily schedule. Because as we started talking about having students career and life-ready, it came to very close to my attention, actually, I think probably within the first week of school that I was here, I was confronted with an issue of I can't get kids enough courses in order for them to graduate. I can tell you right now, as of today, if graduation was tomorrow for five juniors next year, they're not graduating. They're already off track, and there's no way they can do on our current schedule without remediation or courses outside of the school day be able to graduate. There are eleven of those students altogether between the other two classes. So I have eleven students right now in our current system. If they only went to school at Farmington High School, will not be able to graduate on time with their class. Now, some people say, "Well, maybe you don't need to graduate on time," and a five-year plan could be an answer for some people. That is true. It can be an answer for some people, but for those students that I disenfranchise with school, it's the quickest route to be in a dropout. And so that is one of those issues I'm trying to change. I think by giving students more opportunities, and I talk about more opportunities within a school day to take credits, to learn classes, to experience those things they can't do in our normal schedule, actually may turn some of that lack of enthusiasm around. We had some very good feedback, and I've intentionally left all their input up out in the hallway after we watched the movie, most likely to succeed. And some of these issues that we're proposing for courses address some of those concerns that they have in terms of what they would like to see in their school. That's both on the remediation side and that enhancement side. Four-by-four block schedule honors components that were put in place before I arrived. It was put here as real-time to address a time for students to have multiple tiers of support. Real-time, I think, has become a very important commodity here within school. It took us a little growing pains to get to use it. We're still growing a bit in terms of how do we use that to enhance what we're instructing, but it's also helping students who are a little behind in their course studies. So the real-time is maintained. Additionally, we're at four courses. They're seventy-five minutes long. We're currently at fifty-seven minutes, so roughly fifteen minutes extra per course. This is repeated twice a year, so that's why it's called a four-by-four. So a first semester mimics or mirrors the second semester of another four-by-four. Teachers teach three classes. They're currently teaching four all year. They would teach three classes each semester for a grand total of six over the course of the year. So that's where we get a little bit more in terms of contact time with students, but also teachers during the course of the day have a longer prep time. They would also go from a fifty-seven-minute prep time to a seventy-five-minute prep time. Some of that extra time could actually be used for peer collaboration, learning more about technology integration and other types of things that would enhance their professional practice. CTE students have always had a struggle here in terms of the schedule against what they have here and then the transportation time over to the LRTC Center, and they tend to lose out. If we went to a four-by-four schedule, those students actually get to take more Farmington High School classes. And actually, with those students, it's been somewhat of a compromise or a choice. Do I go to the CTE Center, or do I stay here? And if I go to the CTE Center, what do I give up within my academic program? Do I not take a foreign language class? Do I not take another math class? Do I not, heaven forbid, take another English class? So those are all choices that are very hard and difficult for those students that need and want that CTE program to have to give up something here. A four-by-four schedule actually adds an opportunity to their schedule so they don't have to always make those compromises. Some people will talk about there will be gaps in the schedule. You may go a whole semester without a math class. You could, that's a choice. Or you could go a whole year with two math classes. Again, a different kind of choice. You could go one year or one semester with an art class and no art classes for another two years. You could. Or you could choose to take another art class or a more advanced art class. But I think there's a wealth of opportunities there. It comes down to student choice. I do, I know I have two counselors that are very adept at convincing students that look at a four-year plan, we're becoming more adept at doing that and laying them out. I think they'll see where those opportunities arise, that they can have some gaps and make some things up later on, or really do an intensive study of programs. We talked about if a student really wanted to, and they wanted to become maybe an international correspondent, they could actually take eight years of a language. So those are possibilities, too. And it's really all about the perspective of the teacher, the student, and the parent that's really starting to plan out those studies for them. At this point, I've got several people that want to add their opinions to them. I'm going to have them all come up. They'll probably say their name, what their role is here at Farmington High School, and give you a teacher perspective and, I think, a message from students of what they think of our proposal. I invite them all up.
I'm Shonda Tebow. I'm the special ed coordinator here at the high school. And, you know, at first, I was really concerned with the four-by-four and started doing more research and thinking and really looking into it. And from a special ed point of view, what I can say about the four-by-four or block scheduling is, for those students that we have that have, you know, cognitive impairments, executive functioning, these kids are transitioning to a new class every fifty-seven minutes. You get to class, you finally get settled down, you get your books out of your bag, and then, you know, next thing you know, we're transitioning again. So for special ed, that's one of the, I think, one of the benefits. The other benefit is we've lost a little bit of what we call our learning lab time, even though our special ed case managers are assigned. even though our special ed case managers are assigned during that advisory block to their caseload, it's the only time they get to connect unless they're in the specific class with their, with their students. So, going back to having a lab open, so a student who's in a math class, maybe can get the instruction, and then go, okay, I got the instruction, now I'm going to take what I'm supposed to do, and go to the lab, and I'm going to get re-taught, you know, during that same, same block. So, that's, that's another really great point for special ed. My only concern is training for teachers. You know, we have to have a lot of professional development, you know, to support teachers, to teach teachers how to teach 75 minutes, it's a different style of teaching, and hopefully everyone will be in support of, you know, getting the stuff that they need.
I'm Kaylee Varley, I teach English here.
I'm Whitney Carrier, I also teach English here.
And our biggest benefit from this would be actually working with our students. For our upperclassmen, we do individual portfolios, where they pick their own assessments, and they have the opportunity to show their knowledge through whatever methods work best for them. And if we go the block scheduling, that helps them have more time to really hone in on those skills.
Yeah, we do give the students a lot of time in class to work on this at the end of the semester, but we're finding it's never enough time to reach all of our upperclassmen, and help them figure out the best way to show that they've learned, what they've learned throughout the course of the semester. With block scheduling, we're really going to be able to individualize the learning for these students, and make sure that we get everyone on the same track, and having a great portfolio to turn in at the end of the semester. The other things that I keep hearing from my students, I teach an upper-level sophomore honors class, and right now, I have 22 kids in that class, which is a big class. And they keep talking about the opportunities that they're not getting here at Farmington. Yes, they do get to take these honors courses, but they would like the chance to take some of the courses that they're missing by taking honors-level courses. A lot of my sophomores are going to go on to take AP English classes during their junior and senior year, which means that they're missing out on some of the electives that we offer, like creative writing, and some of Kaylee's really good, tell me some of the names.
I teach a criminal minds course.
Yeah, and those kids aren't necessarily going to get the opportunity to take those courses, because they really want to take the AP courses as well. So, right now, they're having to make the choice between earning these college-credit level courses, and taking some of the electives that we offer.
Hi, I'm Mary Ann Di-Toronto, I teach Biology, and I propose the Freshwater Ecology and the Animal Behavior Class to follow Biology, and I also teach sophomores, and they're very excited about having the opportunity to learn Biology, and then take it and apply it, in either one of those courses, or possibly both of them. I think the block scheduling will give students the opportunity to dive a little bit deeper into the subject matter, they'll be able to apply what they know, they'll have the opportunity to use equipment, to collaborate. This block scheduling, or the time, the 75 minutes, gives students a chance to collaborate on a project, pull ideas together, and then revamp anything that they need to. To me, it seems that whenever students have that opportunity, and then their time is cut short, they don't go back and redo it, they either start over, or they leave it the way it is. I feel that this will really enhance their education. If I could, I'd like to read what the two young ladies who were here had to say, they had to leave because they were being picked up at seven, and they were also participating in the winter carnival. One, who, and she is a sophomore, Sydney, I think the block schedule would provide more opportunity and more availability to try new classes. And then Emma says, if we move to a block schedule, it will allow all of the students at FHS to take more classes where they only have five as of now. Real-time provided some options for extra study and clubs, which helped some, however, I would much rather be able to have a set of time to learn a specific thing every day. With a block schedule, we will not only have more class time, but have more visible credits. Thank you. The other thing I wanted to say, and this would be in reference to the class I teach, I know people are afraid that students aren't going to have the same amount of time in class, but I think if we intensify that time, I think they'll be more dedicated to it, they'll be able to, to, to really utilize what we provide them with, and it's just a good opportunity.
Hi, I'm Katie Sauer, I'm one of the school counselors.
And I'm Linda Sheff, I'm one of the school counselors as well.
Mike.
Yeah, it doesn't pick up on the, on the tape, otherwise.
Oh, okay.
So, I'm Katie Sauer, I'm one of the school counselors.
And I'm Linda Sheff, the other school counselor. We're really in support of the block scheduling, we've done a lot of research on different schedules, and we feel like our current schedule that we have right now really limits our students. It limits being able to go in above and beyond, and getting any, taking any electives that they might be interested in, just because they don't have room in their schedule. It really affects our CTE students, they have to find other ways to get their credits in if they want to participate in CTE, so they have to do after-school classes, or they have to do BLAX classes. Our students that want to go for a diploma with distinction, that we don't have enough room in our schedule right now for them to get the credits they need to go above and beyond, to do that as well. So, both of us are really in support of the students having the block scheduling, and we just really think it's in their best interest.
Yeah, I was just going to say, there's a big emphasis, a big reliance on BLAX right now, so for those students that use real-time for, to get their work done, and because maybe they're working, or they have sports, they don't have that time to work on BLAX courses to get those credits they need, and then, if, so you're expecting them to do it at home, but if they don't have access to the internet, that just proposes a big challenge, so I don't feel like we, they should have to rely on BLAX.
I guess I, I have one question. Oh, no, no, I think Dr. Moore can answer. Has this been brought to the staff at the high school level, in like a staff meeting, or is it coming to us first?
This has been to several committees, open committees of any staff member that wanted to come and talk about the subject, and met together with them. I think we may have had four or five meetings of that nature, and then it's come back to a staff meeting. The last staff meeting we had it, what I did is went through an exercise where I had them take our graduation requirements for a general study, general diploma, and charted it out as if they were one of my two counselors, helping a student do a four-year plan. And so, put down four years of English, put down the three years of math, plus a math intensive, and we worked through that whole process, and then asked them, look at the blanks that are on that schedule, and there were three classes that, for the most part, they had blanks. And I asked them, put yourself now in that student's position, what three classes can you choose beyond that, that could fill your class up, and have you met your expectations for our high school program? The room was unduly silent, so it's hard to read silence, but we talked a little bit more about, this is something I think that's in the best interests of students, and moving it forward, because it does give students a lot of opportunities. One thing I didn't tell you, we're in the process of having minimally two courses, possibly three courses next year, go concurrent college credits here. Kaylee, who's had to leave right now, has a college composition course, that would be English 101, so to say, at the college level, that can be opted out. SolidWorks is our CAD program, I happen to have a teacher onboard, who's a certified CAD instructor, that's worth five credits at the community college in Nashua, and we're trying to get him adjunct faculty right now, so that's started in the process. And my next one would be the Excel class, that students will be able to take for college credit. Right now, none of those are possibilities in terms of what we're offering, so that has nothing to do with the schedule itself, but it also teaches that are willing to go above and beyond, to bring that expertise to avail themselves to our students here.
Anybody have any questions?
I had some questions about budget, I'm sorry.
I didn't want to start asking questions until you were done.
Oh, I thought you had finished, I apologize.
No, that's okay. I have had some pre-questions about, does this impact the budget? I'm acutely aware of what the budget is, and what it might have to be. This really has no impact on the budget. In simple terms, if you think about a school, and each student has to have a desk in a classroom at some point, all day long, that still is the truth, it's just how many times do I shuffle the building around to make them move around? That doesn't change, the same number of students, and the same number of desks throughout the building, and I just shuffled them a little less times. Instead of six times, we go shuffle four times, plus real-time. So, that part doesn't go away, I'm still doing it with the same number of staff, I will always work within our means. If that number of staff has to change, because we're adding or subtracting, then we adjust our programs accordingly. And usually, that is affected by class size, but the course is still going on. I think it's one of those opportunities with a new program of studies, that we, we know certain things are coming to happen, it's sort of like when you're driving down the road, a cross-country trip, and you're looking at your gas gauge, and it's approaching empty, most people stop and fill it up, and don't wait till it gets to be empty. At least, I do, I, most of the time. I'm looking to do that with our new program of studies. We've heard a lot from our students of what they would like to see have as options here, I think the staff has listened to them, and brought forward a nice proposal of new courses. I think they've also looked at what it is that they have to do, and what time they have to teach in, and know that the whole idea of going deeper into content actually makes some of the learning more sustainable. If you stop and think about your own learning, what do you remember from your high school days, and what makes it lifelong learning? And part of it is that ability to learn how to learn, and that's one of the parts that we wish to impart on our students, is teaching them really how to learn, and how to learn deeply, so they become good practicing reflection, and good students in that process. So, now I can take questions.
All right. Questions?
Well, at the beginning of your presentation, you said that your request, that your proposal here tonight is twofold, one is new courses, and the other is a different bell schedule, right, the four-by-four?
Correct.
So, in terms of the new courses, or approval of the program of studies, the new courses that you described, are they in addition to the courses that are already in our?
They're in addition to the ones that are currently in the program of studies.
So, it wouldn't replace any there, okay.
I don't think we have any replacements, no.
And of course, part of that is going to be subject to who's opting for what?
Right.
If not enough students opt for a course, it may not.
Right, even currently, we have courses that are in the program of studies, that not enough students opted for, so they didn't run.
So, that's really where the question on the budget comes into play, is for these additional courses, does the proposed budget, so the operating budget that our board approved and adopted and moved forward back in November, does that support?
That supports this.
These new courses.
That, that does support this, we're not listing, looking at whole series of textbooks to support that, we're not looking at major purchases of software, I don't need any more computers.
We have CADs? SolidWorks? That's great.
Through a grant funding, we will be able to have SolidWorks.
Oh, yeah, great, okay.
And so, really, it's not a matter of a lot of additional spending, it's a reallocation of the resources that we have to better meet student needs. Did you have something, Linda?
I did, I had a couple things. I am, I'm in favor of increasing the amount of classes offered, I do feel that the structure they have now is limiting, and I have heard some feedback to that. One question first off, is, are any other schools nearby that have already adopted the four-by-four schedule, and have you heard any feedback on their end?
I'm going to have Linda help me with that answer, we have several schools in the area, Kingswood is one, Dover is another. Spalding is another, and so they have some good models to follow, we've been looking at their models. I will tell you, this changes the scope of what a diploma could look like, so actually, if you approve any of this tonight, we will come back and, and make another suggestion of what a diploma should look like. Right now, instead of a 20 and a half credit diploma, students could earn up to 32, I don't want them to say, oh, I can slough off for that many credit hours. And so, we would come back, and we'd be using those area schools as models. With our, some of our transient students, it's been difficult to transfer them in and out, with the different schedules in the surrounding areas, so this would actually simplify and make things much easier, nicer for them.
In regards to staffing, I'm curious as to how that will all work out, you all sound like you have talked it, to it at length, but I'll be interested, it's such a, an increase in course opportunity, and I, I hope that you're not stretching too thin. So, I guess I would be happy to see that work out well. The only other question I had is in regards to accreditation, where you said that there can be.
It doesn't blow up, I promise.
It's a noise I haven't heard. I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
It's actually the library software program.
Is that really what it is?
Yes.
The concurrent courses that they can take with colleges, is that contingent upon accreditation, or does accreditation to play into any, factor into that on any level?
In terms of the college courses that we're trying to offer, NEAS would give us a couple bonus, bonus points for that, but it doesn't have anything to, to play into that, it just shows that we're offering an enhanced program, and trying to reach all students. What really is the deciding factor is the colleges that we're articulating agreements with, the staff has to become articulated with them, adjunct faculty, so to say. So, their resumes and background need to meet the approval of the colleges. And then the second part is the course design here, the syllabus and the course offering also has to meet that of the college.
And then we have the third part in the policies that are in your packet tonight.
Right.
All right, then. And then I guess the only other question I had, is if these courses are more intensive, and allow more individualization for students, is there any flexibility within the structure? For example, if you find that students, after receiving more individualized attention, can either go up or down, is that something that can be switched midstream, or does that?
It would be easier to switch midstream if we had a four-by-four system, because then if it doesn't work this semester, we can do it for next semester. Our current system right now, unless it really has a course offering in the same period, it's very difficult to do anything, because it would disrupt their whole day, and that, keep in mind, that day is a day for the whole year.
I think that's all I have for now. So, you mentioned that you held committee sessions, where it was open to all staff to come and join. What sort of participation did you get in those?
It really depended on, on how early it was at the season, and then there was a lot of talk within staff members, at department meetings, and within their departments, and lunchtimes, and so as the meetings went on, some of those numbers dwindled, but they often brought back feedback from, I was talking to people in my department, or people at lunch, so there was a broader virtual representation at those meetings.
And you said that you, you noticed within a week, that there was a mismatch almost, right, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but.
I said, within my first week here, people came to me, and said, we can't make this work for some kids.
Because we heard from parents very early on, when we were talking about changing to this existing bell schedule, we heard from parents, that they didn't see how their student could reach for that distinctive diploma.
Right, the time, there's just not enough time within that daily schedule for that student to do that, they actually have to go out beyond Farmington High School to make that happen for themselves, where they take a class someplace else, or take it on BLAX, they just physically cannot fit it into their schedule. And then if they, if they happen to fail a course at any point along the line, again, it's impossible for them to, to make that target mark that they would like to have.
I think when this schedule was implemented, the focus was really on, school improvement plan, it really encompasses getting that advisory piece in there, and that was really the focus. And there were concerns, I think we found that it's not doing what our students need. The real-time has been the benefit of what's happened here. But I think for us to continue with something, just because we changed it, so we don't want to change it again, if we know that there are pieces that aren't working, that doesn't make sense. And, you know, I'm willing to say, okay, you know, we, we learned something from this, I want to make sure that we apply what we've learned, instead of just saying it sits in a notebook.
Were any of the-
All my stuff was in my purse. I left you there.
I kept it long for you. Forgive me, I can't recall which staff members were part of the committee that proposed the current bell schedule. Obviously, you weren't part of it, because you're a brand-new principal. But were any of the folks that were involved in the proposal to go with what we have now involved in the transition sort of planning? Just for due diligence, not because-
Yeah.
I am in no way proposing that you stick with something that doesn't work. That's not ideal.
I'm only looking to my colleagues, so I'm not quite sure who had been steerheading-
Part of what?
-the real time and that whole schedule change. I do know that some of the people that were on that committee are no longer employed here. So, the remnants of that committee has been small.
Right, okay. So, there's not much opportunity for overlap, it sounds like, in terms of learning from what we've done this year.
From what I understand, that committee itself wasn't, wasn't large. Maybe you guys can, do we have, do you have an idea how many were on that committee?
I think there was something, five or six.
Yeah, there was three or four that were represented on your packet.
So, and again, the response was five or six. I know that that's not picking up on the mic.
Okay, just for, you know, diligence before, because I mean, that is a big part of stakeholder management, is, oh, another change? And navigating through change and leading through change is one of the most difficult things to do.
I agree, it is.
I want to set it up for success.
Stan, did you have something?
Yeah. First, I just want to say I'm a huge fan of the block schedule, so thank you for considering it. Makes my heart when schools that are in block go backwards, but, so I'm glad that we're considering going forward. Thank you for bringing that up. I do want to caution though, because, I mean, somebody mentioned earlier, one of the, one of the talks was about professional development, and it's important. I'm just asking if you have plans for this, because fifty-seven minutes times one hundred and eighty days is a lot longer than seventy-five minutes times ninety days. So, it's, you know, the big push is like, we have more time, but we really don't have more time. And one of the fears is that teachers take their fifty-seven-minute lesson plan and just deliver it in seventy-five minutes, and you cut off half-year's worth of time. So, you don't save it. So, you really do, you know, what's the plan for transitioning as far as professional development and redoing curriculum that's already set for fifty-seven minutes?
I can talk a little bit about that. We're in the process currently with all our professional development days to look at our curriculum and move to a competency-based education system. We have some competencies in place, but we're not anywhere close to being competency-based. So, all our professional development days this year are geared towards that. I've also submitted a grant proposal that, four days after the end of school, whenever that might be, is given over to professional development, both for competency-based instruction and technology integration within their classrooms. So, it's that merger, we've got some new classes, we've got some new time, and we have an opportunity to change our way of instruction and assessment. So, in terms of that being on our horizon, I think we're there.
And I think part of it, too, is that it's not just professional development about how to shift from fifty-seven to seventy-five. It's really looking at pedagogy as a whole, and what needs to shift as we move to competency? How do we integrate the technology? How do we differentiate for students? And so, it's really the whole instructional package, as opposed to just looking at block scheduling as this piece. It's all of it that will address that part.
Good answer. Thank you.
Joel, did you have anything on the schedule? Anybody have anything else?
Can I just provide a little feedback? That presentation was fantastic. It seemed very well rehearsed. I don't know if you rehearsed it or not, but everybody seemed to know exactly what they were going to say and who was going to say it in what order. But I'm particularly excited about the new courses, as, you know, the little blurb description that we had in our packet. I do have some ideas. If there does come an opportunity, I will bog down the meeting on particular ideas for those courses, but.
Does anybody have a motion?
I move to accept.
One more question?
Sorry. When is this planning on being implemented?
Beginning of the school year next year.
Next year, okay.
Well, they would have to be able to choose their courses.
Yeah, exactly.
This spring.
We would want to be able to offer a program of studies for students to choose courses within the next probably six weeks, less time than that, actually. Because I know I have guidance departments that are just thinking, can we build a master schedule? Because it is a very large task. And so, if we have approval on a program of studies, we can get that process going.
So, you would come back to us at our next meeting with a program of studies to approve?
Well, you have, the program of studies that you have currently-
Yeah.
-would have those additions with it, but it wouldn't necessarily change what you've already approved for this year. So, it's, you'd be approving the additions to the existing program of studies.
That is correct. The only thing that would change, and we would come back later, is with the additional, if the schedule is changed, that would change what diploma options would be.
All right, so I'll take them one at a time, just to make everybody clear. I'll move to approve the new additions to the program of studies.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I'm going to abstain.
Did you have, did you want to make the other motion as well?
I will, nobody else will. I move to approve the new daily schedule as described.
A second by Linda, discussion? All those in favor?
Abstain.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
I did have people services report, but it's not on the agenda.
And I apologize, that's my fault.
Okay.
And before Mrs. Donido gives her report, I'm going to brag about her just a little bit. We received a letter from the Department of Education. It's been determined on January twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen, the Farmington School District has at a hundred percent compliance level relative to thirty-four CFR three hundred dot three zero one dash three hundred dot three eleven. Initial evaluations for the April to June report period, three previous years of compliance for Farmington High School, fifteen, sixteen, fourteen, fifteen, and thirteen, fourteen, were each also hundred percent compliance. So, that is a huge, huge deal for the department as a whole, for Mrs. Donido's leadership. A hundred percent compliance is-
Uneasy to attain.
It's very, very difficult to attain.
And I have to credit our special education case managers who do noble work in trying to get parents to respond, and even to the point of, you know, Diana, would you take this to home? Conversation, so, you know, kudos to them for being on top of things. The report you have is from January, and I apologize, I'll do some updates as we, as we go along. The Student Assistance Program had been in existence for twenty-four days as of January sixteenth. We're contracting with Live Free Recovery Consultants in order to do the Student Assistance Program, which is geared towards drug and alcohol use and misuse prevention. It services students in grades seven through twelve. They began by doing small group presentations arranged by the guidance counselors at Farmington High School and at the middle school to kind of give an introduction of what the service would be, and then began running in earnest December fourth. And they are in district on an average of, you know, just over three, with snow days and everything else, about, well, just over three days a week. So, over that period of time, they've met with forty-six students in total, so it's, which was wonderful. We're really, really thrilled. They work a lot on emotional support, assistance with personal and academic goals, so they're not just necessarily talking about, you know, something that might have to do with substance abuse, but perhaps coupled with their own challenges, students' own challenges in terms of making positive choices in relation to academics. Work on building healthy coping strategies. They're also looking to develop groups. And we had a meeting just last week with Live Free Recovery, our counselors from community partners, our counselors from the high school, and then Sarah Bold from the middle school. We kind of did a wraparound just to have a conversation about how things are going. Everybody felt very comfortable with the work that's being done. Nice, nice conversation with everybody. We're planning an evening for community, targeting right now March twenty-third, for what's called access to treatment kind of workshop, where we'll invite community people that are working in addiction prevention and those kind of recovery pieces. So, anybody connected in that way in Farmington, but then also other service providers that might just simply deal with mental health, and have it be an evening, and I've talked to a couple of family, families that are looking for treatment already, to come in and kind of get connected. Say, here's the paperwork you would fill out, here's the name you would call, and just in also have an opportunity for, if you've got a child, you can leave them for daycare. So, we're working on setting that up on the twenty-third, and then having a follow-up on March thirtieth, to kind of check in with people that are willing to come in from the community that, you know, went to make that connection for treatment, to find out what kind of hurdles they had, how else can we help you? And we hope to continue to have those, hopefully through the rest of the school year, kind of check-ins, and then work on having those, those next year as well in the fall. There are also, so the Student Assistance Program has also done some work in terms of semester one. They have had some really good success with having a group of middle school students that are children of substance-misusing parents. And that's been successful. The high school students are resistant to joining a group of that name, and who can blame them? But we're looking at different ways to kind of, to reshape the groups, to kind of talk about challenges that might be connected there, but not necessarily, you know, perhaps using the same terminology. But that's, that's something that's, we're on track to start as well. Second semester, we've got senior groups, so we've had an influx of students that have moved into the district. This is about that time of year we get that. And so, we have those students that are newcomers, so seventh and eighth grade, those students that are new to the district, make sure to check in with them with Ashley Sheedy, and she holds groups with them. Ninth through twelfth grade newcomers also has a group as well, and it's simply just an opportunity to kind of meet. We also talked about it our last meeting with all of the counselors gathered together about making it part of our kind of attendance protocol to, once we reschedule a meeting with parents when students have been absent for so many days. Once that meeting occurs, as is required by DCYF, in addition to home visit, which is what I do, we also had a plan to ask them to check in with Ashley, or have Ashley check in with the student. Because oftentimes, we're seeing that there can be a complication related to mental health or substance issues that are going on, not necessarily particularly with the student, but something that might be preoccupying them and keeping them from getting connected in school. And then, Ashley can make a determination, Ashley is our Student Assistance Program counselor, can make a determination if it's, if it's, repeated visits are needed, or, you know, just to make a check-in, so that this, you can kind of, you know, determine if there's a need there that maybe isn't being met quite yet. We have begun the curriculum, Keeping It Real, with the seventh and ninth grades, as was required. It's a evidence-based prevention program. So, that has started. Ashley is, you know, taking the pieces of the curriculum and then kind of tailoring them to the groups that she meets with. So, we're really thrilled with the response to the program so far. I do have some details in there as of January, although I think those numbers have gone up a little bit in terms of court-involved families and delinquency cases, and I'll let you look at that. Lots more visits to the home as of January. Let's see, there are four visits to families' homes. There's been at least four more since then, so that that data's a little, a little dated. In relation to attendance concerns, mental health concerns, homelessness, checking, checking that, you know, those certain things have been resolved, or is there anything we can do when, when sometimes a parent can't make contact with us as readily as we would like? And then, we have completed the CPI, Crisis Prevention Intervention Training, Mr. Coco and I, so both certified trainers, and we're looking to schedule those. Oh, my apologies, I am so sorry.
Just a second, I'm sorry.
We're looking to schedule workshops for paraeducators and staff for those as well. And I think that does it. We're looking at doing some zones of regulation training in addition to social thinking training. We're looking at that towards, towards August, in order to be part of that behavioral service that we're looking at rolling out in the fall. And then, the caseload numbers you see there. We are at, right now, eleven students out of districts, so we've dropped down one from what's on your, on your sheet right now. Any questions, I can-
Just a question. It sounds like you guys are in, putting forth a lot of great programs. Are you advertising? I mean, a lot of it sounds like it's not just for students, but for the community as well. Have you, have you gone beyond the school system in regards to advertising for any of these programs?
So, we haven't started, for the Student Assistance Program, which is really the in-house program, we, that's kind of advertised by word of mouth. And honestly, we've gotten some student referrals, we've got a lot of teacher referrals, but it's not a bad idea, because we did talk last Friday about putting together a poster to kind of, especially for that group that we wanted to revamp, for, for kind of an advertisement for students. If you'd like to join this group and kind of talk about these issues, this is when we'll be meeting. And so, you're right, that's, that's one we're working at promoting. We haven't started to promote yet the March Access to Treatment Evening yet, because we're kind of sorting out the details, but that'll be coming out soon. Anybody else?
Yeah, I have a quick question. Are home visits scheduled?
No.
And who goes?
I go.
Just you?
No, I go with, I take another staff member.
Thanks.
Everybody's good? Moving on. Here onto the life safety grant application? Tell me when you're ready to just-
Well, I may have to excuse myself for another moment, so I prefer that you continue, if you would please. Thank you for doing it.
There were pieces in your packet around this, and I'm not going to talk in a lot of specificity about this. This is the Public School Infrastructure Fund, Improving Security Application for two thousand seventeen, and yes, it's now two thousand eighteen. But this is an application for grant money sort of available through the DOE, and they fall under two categories, improving security or life safety issues. Life safety issues would come under, you know, if we have beams that are collapsing because of issues that we, were beyond our control, those sorts of things. This grant allows us to apply for monies to improve our security. We can talk about some of the specifics of the application. I don't want to get into exactly where we need to improve, because that says, you know, please, here's the whole, we're not going there. And I think that we have a number of things in place that need to be there, but we have some other pieces that this is an opportunity to just make sure that we have some of those much more robust. The requirements of the grant are such that we need to have a vote that gives us the authority to expend any matching funds that might be required. For the most part, the matching funds are twenty, some are forty percent, depending upon what monies are available and where they kind of shake out. This is due March fifth, and so, one of the reasons why we talked to you tonight, too, about the savings that we're looking at within the insurance piece, is that we're confident that we will have more than enough to cover what we would need to for the twenty to thirty percent that we might be asked for here. As you can see, at the end, I've put a, kind of a last sheet, and this was in your packet as well, of what it is that we're asking for. This totals around, it's a little over seventy-four thousand dollars that we're asking for. We may get the whole thing in its entirety, they may, the commission may say, you can have this, you can have this, and not that. We don't know. But we won't know unless we ask. So, this is due March fifth, so as your next board meeting is the night of March fifth.
So, on this, you have twenty percent share, is that going to be enough?
That's, we anticipate either twenty or forty percent. We would have, the amount that we're asking for in total, then that would end up being our, our percentage would be of the seventy-four. So, we would have sufficient, either in capital reserve or from those funds, to balance out whatever we would need there.
Do I have any questions? Do we have any questions?
If you wanted to talk about the specific projects, we can do that in non-public.
A motion to accept the proposal.
Second.
And to grant us the authority to expend matching funds if the opportunity arises?
Do you want to put an up to amount?
Up to?
40% of the, or what would we say? We'd need to put a dollar amount in.
The number we have here is $14,847.
That's a 20%, correct?
That's a 20%.
And they could ask for 40%?
I haven't seen them ask for more than 40% on the cases that have been approved so far. 40% is $29,694.
Okay.
We agree.
What's the number again?
$29,694.
29 or 21?
Just say 30. $29,000. Yeah, you can say 30,000, and then we're certainly covered.
Up to $30,000, is that your motion, Stan?
My amendment to your motion.
Yeah.
Accept that number?
I do. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
No.
Do you want these back?
Sure, please. Do we need to talk about any of this in non-public?
If there's any specifics that you'd like, can I consider any of those? That you want to ask?
I don't, I was just throwing it out there.
Policies, I have IHCD slash LEB, Advanced Course Work, Advanced Placement Courses, and STEM Dual.
And if you look at IHCD slash LEB, and LEB slash IHCD, and Mrs. Cardinal, the correction with the I, the error was actually the School Board Association, not us.
Really?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, I felt somewhat vindicated.
Yeah.
So, they are essentially the same policy that is somewhat slightly differently worded, because the I section deals with the instructional piece, the L section deals with the partnership with other outside agencies. And so, they're targeted towards slightly different audiences, but it's covering the same information, because these are geared toward those dual enrollment courses that we're talking about. It does include Advanced Placement Course Work, it does include the possibilities of ELOs, but these also are the policies that we need to have in place for that STEM piece that I brought to you earlier, that students can take those two courses at the community college level, but these need to be in place in order for that to happen. So, these are essentially the boilerplate. It doesn't say that you have to have both, but because they're cross-referenced, it seemed to make, and because they're not identical in the cross-reference, it seemed to make sense to say, we'll bring them forward as a pair. So, that's why you see them there.
So, these are two different policies. I have IHCD slash LEB, and then I have LEB slash IHCD.
The one that starts with the L deals with more how that affects the relationship between Farmington High School and whatever college that we're working with to grant the, the one that starts with the I deals more with the instructional piece of what that looks like here on the ground. So, but it's essentially the same.
You want a motion to put it on the table for discussion?
Yeah, I was just going to say, but, but the policies do not contradict each other in any way.
No, they don't, yeah.
So, yes, I'll move to put it on, put that, put this on the table.
As the final read, or?
Final read.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, now we have, did we, did we do the LEB, I, did you motion both of them?
I said both, both, yeah.
Got it.
All right, so now we have EH, Public Use of School Records. Do we have a motion to accept?
I'll move to accept.
Is this the final or first read?
Second.
Final.
From Linda, discussion?
Is this in any way different than what we have right now? Do we have one of these in place?
We have one of these in place that does not meet all of the legal refer, there've been some updates since ours was in place. This was last revised in September of 2017, there've been a couple of other legislative pieces that have come through since ours was done, I believe, in 2004? So, we've missed a couple of legislative updates.
Fair enough. Anything else? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Angela?
Thank you.
Thanks.
We'll keep them coming. You've got to count them out.
Old business? Anybody have any old business? I have some other.
I have one other as well.
I don't have any old business.
Nobody old business? All right, you want to do your other?
Sure. Moore had mentioned in her presentation that in March, and remind me, Dr. Moore, which day that was that the students were testing? It's the 14th?
I think so.
Okay.
Well, maybe the 21st.
21st, yeah, you're right, sorry. On that day, we'll have all high school students taking either the PSAT, the ASVAB, the SAT. And so, what we are proposing is that, like we do with final exams, because these tests will go at least until noon time for students, if not until 1 o'clock, that if students have made diligent efforts toward actually doing what they need to on the testing, that we allow them to leave when testing is completed, as opposed to waiting, because it's also going to be staggered time somewhat with the end of those tests. So, that's my proposal.
Questions?
Just a question, so you'd let them leave after, but they would need to have their own ride home, correct?
They would need to have, and they would need to have a written permission slip that they could leave. Transportation will still run at the end of the day, so obviously if students choose not to or don't have another ride, they can still ride the bus.
What would they do in the meantime if they didn't have a ride home?
We would have...
Supervision like after?
Yeah.
Anybody else?
What are the teachers doing? If the test is over at noon time, what's everybody doing?
Well, and again, part of that is going to determine about when things finish. We'd have supervision of those other students, we'd also have an opportunity for professional development that afternoon. It's not just going to be, they're done and everybody's gone.
Angela, did you have something?
Yeah, roughly how many hours ahead of the normal dismissal time are we looking at here? One, two?
It would be anywhere between noon and 1:00 is probably when the testing would be done. So, it'd be half-day, and then some we'd off for lunch.
About the same time as an early release day?
Do you want a motion for that, to go ahead and do that, or you're just getting feedback?
If you're prepared to move, that's fine. If you want to just do feedback, and we can certainly revisit it again in March if we need to.
Well, I'm okay with, with it, so I'll motion to accept that proposal.
Second.
I think that's what we do on final stays, and I think it should be fine. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
No.
Opposed? Want to pose?
I'm the dissenter tonight.
That's okay.
That's good.
My other was, I had the Policy Committee meeting today, and the Wellness Fair is coming up on April 5th, but some of the questions they had was, with the tragedy in Florida, was there a memo that went out to staff that said, this is what we're going to say to students? And was there, was there a direction to that? I guess that wasn't really their question, that one's probably more mine, but there was, there wasn't a whole lot of conversations that happened, didn't think. So, that was one of their concerns. And if there, if, if there is tragedies like that, should we have a policy in place as to, you know, what kind of information we're going to give to the students, and, you know, what's appropriate at each, at each level? Not necessarily bad feedback, but just some feedback.
Does it need to be a policy, or should it be a procedure?
Policy, procedure.
You'd like the Policy Committee to visit that idea?
Yes, please. Does anybody else have any other buildings and grounds? Have they met all this year?
Not really.
Maybe that's a committee that we don't fill next year?
Well, I mean, it was, I think it depends on what kind of tasks and projects are involved. I mean, it focused heavily last year on moving the SAU. And we spent considerable amount of time touring buildings and looking at space.
Yeah, I guess I was just looking at the different committees that we have, and wondering if we, going on, on you, you know, do we need to have all these committees, and are they meeting, and are they functioning?
I think as we move forward with the performance contract, that Buildings and Grounds would probably be one that would be looking at those pieces perhaps ahead of the board.
Yeah.
But it doesn't have to work that way.
I have to say, what I like about being on the committee that I'm on, is I get in the buildings, and I get a little feedback, and I hear a little more of the good, bad, the exceptional, you know, and I get to see what our buildings look like, so I appreciate that part of it.
And I have to say, I am on the Professional Development Committee, and I didn't realize it meets during the day. And I work during the day, so that was oversight on my part, and I do apologize for not being able to go. I don't know how I can fix that. I was thinking they were nighttime meetings, so I apologize.
Do you remember, did we designate an alternate for you already at the reorganization meeting?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I mean, this happened to me too, it's, it's hard to expect a board member to be on a committee when all of us work and people refuse to meet, other than during school. So, it's, it's very difficult to schedule that way.
All right, anything else under other?
I just have a quick question. The Conservation Committee has approached me regarding recycling, and I do know that we're in...
They approached me as well.
Okay, I do know that we are under contract for a while, but they'd like to know when the end date of the contract is, and what the viability of that program would be.
So, we're looking at the end of...
End of June, and actually, yes, since we just got sort of over the last major activity of the deliberative session, so I...
The slight lull into the vote.
Yep. Sort of pull a committee together that can be looking at, well, what are the services that we actually need that, for recycling, and also that what can be integrated into the classroom that students can learn from it? And that's the piece, that's a big disconnect that we're missing on our government contract.
Not that we're necessarily looking for a company that's going to hand us a recycling curriculum, but what is it that we can, their resources and their guidance?
I mean, that they, that they can provide us.
I'm not sure. Yeah, I'm not sure what sort of angle the Conservation Committee was looking at, but I think that they were looking possibly just doing it in-house internally and helping out on that end, so it wouldn't necessarily be contracted through a professional service. I think that they were looking to get something going on.
But either way, what, if we're going to do our own recycling, then that needs to be part of whatever contract we run into with our trash, because that's part of what we ran into this year, that they own our trash, which also includes our recyclables right now. So, we would need to make sure that stipulation is part of whatever moves forward, because it wasn't that I wanted to be throwing away all those plastic bottles.
But we will definitely reach out to them to include those members as part of the RFP process.
So, we'll be putting the trash out to...
Right, but no document will be released until we've actually brought together a small ad hoc group that we can talk about it.
What should it look like? Okay. Anybody have anything else?
Could it be as simple as, I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but could it be as simple as just, that's what's specked out, next time we go up for bid on the contract?
It might be that it's, this is the only piece that we're looking for you to deal with, yes. But we need to make sure that we've identified what that piece is, rather than just...
Our internal logistics.
Giving, giving a global name to it, and somehow the global interpretation doesn't give us the latitude we were looking for. All right, public participation, anybody in the public have anything they want to add?
Do you want to tell us how awesome this meeting was?
Thank you guys for coming out.
All right, I will entertain a motion to go into non-public session one, under RFA 91A32A, B and C for nominations and resignation.
So moves.
By Andrew, second by Stan, all those in favor, by roll? Ayes. All right, thank you guys for coming.